Hello to our listeners and viewers of our video stream. Welcome to WPVM's Asheville City Council Candidate Forum. Today, we'll be hearing part two of a two-part forum with three candidates on each day vying for three open seats on the council. Today's candidates are Todd Levin, Sage Turner, and Charles CJ Domingo. Each candidate will have the opportunity to share their vision for Asheville and answer questions on pressing local issues. Three council members will be elected from a total of the six candidates in this election cycle. Dr. Chris Cooper is the moderator. Thank you all for participating in WPVM's public service programming.
Great. Well, thanks so much for having us. Thanks, everybody, for listening, for not just exercising your democratic rights and responsibilities to the voting booth, but for learning and getting more informed on the issues. I think these kinds of forums are incredibly important, particularly in the nationalized politics in which we live. As we're recording this today, there's a rally for a presidential candidate right outside the door. What really matters, I think, is what's happening in our city, in our region, in our communities. And so I'm glad you all are paying attention. And also want to thank WPVM for offering this forum and the service. It's an incredible service for the for the community and the region more generally. And then also want to thank all three candidates for being here today. I don't think we spend nearly enough time thanking people for running for office, for putting their time, for putting their energy, oftentimes even for putting their money into trying to serve us and be public servants. And so we have six folks running for three seats. The other forum was recorded just yesterday. And just to remind everybody before we begin, also absentee ballots go out, begin to go out on September 6th. Early voting in North Carolina is going to run October 17th through November 2nd. And then Election Day itself is November 5th. And thanks to some new rules, Election Day also means the deadline to get in those mail ballots. So it really is the end. With that said, we're going to begin by opening statements. Opening statements will be three minutes long. We're going to shoot for around six questions. Responses to those will be two minutes apiece or off the two minutes apiece. There is a possibility for rebuttal if somebody's name gets mentioned or if it seems appropriate. And we'll move in kind of rotating order. And so with the rules out of the way and the welcome out of the way, we will begin with three-minute opening statements. And in order, we will go Todd Levin, then Sage Turner, then CJ Domingo.
Thank you, Chris. Okay, so my name's Todd Levin. Obviously, I'm running for seat on Asheville City Council. I first moved to Asheville in 1985. I met my wife here in Asheville around late 93, early 94. We worked together at Applebee's, actually, on Tunnel Road, and had our first date at the Waffle House on Tunnel Road. I went away from 1998 to '04 to join the United States Army. I was a combat, took the cow machine gunner, came back in 2004. I went to school full-time at UNCA on the GI Bill and worked full-time with Grove Park Inn, waiting tables, and tending bar. Then I went to law school in Chapel Hill from '07 to 2010. I am very lucky to be blessed with an amazing wife, who's not only my life partner, she's my law partner. We both own our own law firm, the Levin Law Firm. I have three amazing daughters. I'm an adjunct professor at UNC Chapel Hill. I teach a class on military and veterans' law. And I've run a free legal clinic for homeless veterans for, oh, gosh, going on probably close to 11 years now. My main thing that I want to bring to Asheville, especially to City Council, is a refocus on core city services. Of course, city services, I focus a lot on affordable housing and the unhoused. That's that's really about it. If it comes up, I'm also in favor of districting the City Council like our county is. And that's that's really all I have, Chris. Thank you.
Thanks so much. Sage Turner, three minutes.
Thank you. And thanks for getting us together today, Chris and Daphne. I appreciate it. It's always nice to get on the radio a little bit. So I'm Sage Turner. I'm currently serving my first term on City Council. And with your support, I will be reelected on November 5th. You can find out more about me and my campaign at sageforashville.com. I've lived in Asheville almost 25 years now, raised my family here, and have since empty-nested. I've lived in West Asheville, just off Haywood Road, for most of that time. I've seen a lot of change in those decades. Asheville's changed quite a bit in the last 20 years, and some of it for great growth reasons, beautiful reasons. But some things are still problematic. We're still experiencing some growth challenges. And that is kind of where I'm focusing this second time. So my education background includes a master's in city planning and GIS. So I've got some background knowledge of how cities run, how cities are built, and how sometimes they don't work out so well, which is very helpful. I've served on numerous community boards, committees, service roles for 25 years. And just really, I get a lot from that. And it's from that volunteer work, actually, that I rose to this level of volunteering. So I always suggest folks get involved. I work downtown at the French Broad Co-op, and I have for a number of years. I'm responsible for their finances, their real estate, and their reconstruction. So we're under a seven-year redevelopment, and I manage the construction projects as well. I have three primary focus areas for this campaign and for the next four years if I'm elected. So the first one is housing. Housing is a big one. It's first and foremost for me because I believe that all of the issues in our community can be tied back to a housing problem. So housing, housing affordability, housing access, housing equity, and the ever-elusive home ownership, but it's getting harder and harder to be a homeowner in our city. So housing, across the board, all housing issues. And I currently lead both the City Council's Housing and Community Development Committee, and also the Four County Regional Housing Consortium. I chair both of those. Second is community safety. So that can mean a lot of things to different people. To me, it means police, fire, community responders, or alternative responses. And it also means climate change and how we're preparing and reacting for what is coming and keeping our community safe. And third, much like Todd, is core services, really just getting back to the basics. I want to ensure that we are delivering on our utmost responsibilities of taking care of our community, the city, and its residents. And, you know, that can mean from software systems to water systems. It can mean from sidewalks and potholes, anything that makes the city function every day. I want to make sure we're doing our best. So again, sageforashville.com if you need some more information. Thank you.
Fantastic. Thank you. CJ Domingo, three minutes.
Hey there, Asheville. My name's CJ Domingo, or Charles Domingo is how you might see me. Charles CJ Domingo, I think is how they have it on the ballot. I'm an Asheville native, born and raised right here, born at St. Joseph Hospital before they merged with Mission. I've lived here almost all my life. I went to Asheville City Schools. I went to Francine Delaney Charter School. I went to UNCA where I graduated with a degree in microbiology. For me, the biggest reason that I'm running for office and what I want to try and bring back to our city is a focus on the people that make our town so worth visiting, such a great place to live, to work, to learn and grow in. And so for me, that means a focus on three main pillars. So first and foremost is making sure that we are taking care of all those things that we rely upon. You heard Todd and Sage both talk about this, where it's a focus on core city services, the infrastructure, the making sure that we're coordinating with the power company to ensure that when you turn on your lights, you get you get power when you need it. When you open your water, you're not worried about a water main bus like we just had over at River Ridge, or water outages like several folks in North Asheville were reporting. You can count on the water being clean, clear, and safe to drink when you need it. And if you can't plan for these things, if you can't plan on the police coming when you call, the fire being there, the fire department coming when you call, you can't plan your day. And if you can't plan your day, how do you plan for your future? Which brings me to pillar two, ensuring that we take care of Ashevilleans, making sure that we all have ample opportunity to be able to get ahead, to thrive in our economy, so we're not working until they put us in a hole in the ground, to make sure that we're taking care of our children, and whom we invest so much time, care, and energy, to make sure not only that they're their best and brightest, that they can be, but they're good neighbors and the sort of people that we would love to have in our community, and that they're not forced to move away to get a job that can afford to survive in the current U.S. economy. If we don't take care of all of these things, if we don't take care of them, and we don't take care of that, then our city has no future. And that brings me to my third pillar, which is clear and accountable government, because this goes beyond any one person. I'm not pointing the finger at anybody in leadership, just we have really gotten away from leadership hearing what people need, because we consistently miss to get solutions to problems when we could get them cheap, and we're forced to buy them more expensively. And if we keep making missteps and our government keeps saying that they're sorry, we need to change something. We need to make it to where we're not saying sorry, we are instead saying, look at all the great stuff we were able to secure for the people of Asheville.
Great. Thank you so much. And we'll go next to our first question, again, two minutes for each question that will come. We're going to begin here with Sage Turner, then CJ Domingo, then Todd Levin. So the question is a simple one in some ways, but it does have two parts. Does Asheville have a crime problem? How should the City Council approach criminal justice in the city? I'd like to ask you to please answer both parts of that. Does Asheville have a crime problem? How should the City Council approach criminal justice in the city? Sage Turner.
Does Asheville have a crime problem? It does. It has a growing crime problem, but you see this a lot in today's economy. It's not just Asheville, it's all around. As it gets harder to afford where you live, and the services, and the foods, the basic needs, crime rises, out of desperation often. And it's not unique to Asheville, but it is important that we address it. So I've just been, I'm on council now, as you know, and I just went through a very rigorous and challenging budget cycle for this upcoming year that included just trying to get our first responders, both AFD, our community responders, and police, up to a minimum threshold of $50,000 starting pay. So, and that's just to help, it's a step. We need to be doing more. So there's multiple ways to address crime. It's not just policing, there's intervention, there's preemptive services, and across the board, we need to be doing more of everything. Particularly to crime and police response, we are still experiencing a deficit in officers in the high 20 percentile range. It's down from our 45% historically, so we are doing better, but there's more that needs to be done. We have also just enacted five new community responders to send out to the community, mostly downtown and the surrounding areas, as issues come up, because we need a different kind of response. It's not just police response that induces better safety. I would say, too, we're going to have to rely on more partners. The city is not really strong in mental health. We don't have a health department. That really has always lived under the county. So we're teaming up with things like partnerships with the county and COC, Continuum of Care, to really get to the core of how these issues start. I'll stop there, I'm about out of time.
Great. Thank you so much. CJ Domingo.
Yeah, so I think that when you ask, is there a crime problem? I think that people feel that they have an increase in the sort of crimes that are personal, where you have a lot more minor theft, you have a lot more trespassing, you have people who are encroaching on the sort of bubble that we build around ourselves, where we're trying to live our lives, and we want to know that everything that we plan for is just going to be carried out, and we don't have to worry about any major deviations. I think that for the City Council, yes, there are a multifaceted number of approaches that we need to take to make perfect solutions. But kind of echoing what we talked about back in February, I think that when somebody calls for emergency help, we need to make sure that they feel heard and supported by the city, and that we do get those responses out there in an emergency. I think that the most proactive thing we could do, however, is a renewed focus and commitment to community policing. If people felt that they already had an officer, someone nearby, who they could use as their asset to sort of guide them through, what sort of response they need. So in this case, I would mean, if somebody was, say, even in my neighborhood, if we had an officer here, and I had an unhoused person that wasn't bothering anybody but was making people feel unsafe, we could touch base with that officer and say, we need to talk about what can we do for this person, because we are all asking this person to move along, they're not doing anything overtly violent, but we need to connect them with these services. And in this way, it kind of gives a pathway to not only make the community feel safer, but also to give that person, that unhoused person, a pathway to the services that will support them, to help them to end their houselessness and get them back on their feet.
Great. Thank you so much. Todd Levin.
Thank you, Chris. So I agree a lot with what Sage said, and I want to take a minute to thank our current City Council for giving raises to the first responders. That is a wonderful thing to do. The reason why we've gone from less than four years from a 45% deficit of our police force to high 20s is because they're getting a higher raise. And that's, that's important. I mean, if just the mere presence of our great APD on the streets is a wonderful deterrent. Okay? Now to directly address the question that you said. Yes, I mean, I think it goes without saying that all crime is a problem. We definitely have a crime problem in Asheville. I think increased police presence helps. I think there's a good chance that the Business Improvement District might help downtown. I'm not going to get too far in the weeds with that, because I have a strange feeling that's going to be coming up again in this forum. I think community partners are incredibly important, but I also really want to agree with Sage in saying that it's when you can't afford the basic services, when you can't afford a house, when you can't afford rent, when you can't afford groceries, you're intrinsically going to have an increase in crime. It just flows. So I think addressing it in a more all-encompassing aspect is great. I think certain things that we can do need to be addressed to the county instead of the city, like our catch and release, you know, we have an issue with our detention center. That's beyond the City Council, that's a county issue. So it's not just us, I think, engaging with us and our partners' help. And I think a great way for crime prevention is that City Council can actively do the same, engage with the police and other community partners. Thank you, Chris.
Great. Thanks so much. For the next question, we'll go CJ Domingo first, and then Todd Levin, and then Sage Turner, please. So similarly structured question, does Asheville have an affordable housing problem? How should the City Council approach housing policy in the city? So CJ Domingo, you've got two minutes.
Well, I mean, thank you, Chris. I appreciate you letting me start off with an easy one, because this is, is the sky blue? Is grass green? Yes, we have an affordable housing problem in our city, and everybody knows it. As far as how do we tackle it, I think that the city has been making good strides on trying to make sure that our big projects are thoughtful in the way that they are making our communities richer, in making affordable housing more available in our most desirable zones. I think that we could do more in trying to give more mixed-use middle, what they call missing middle housing. And I also would like to see further support for ADU construction for people who already own property within the city. We have a really great federal program, which allows homeowners who have more property than they are using to go ahead and get an FHA loan with assistance to be able to afford to construct one. I think that we could do more as a city to encourage homeowners to make use of that program, because if we do, then instead of waiting for one big developer to build a big apartment building, we could have hundreds, if not thousands, of new ADUs be constructed on a short time scale, with the stipulation, of course, that we make sure people are using them for long-term rentals and not turning them into an Airbnb. But if we do, that allows a lot more members of the community to be part of the solution, and allows a lot more builders to be a part of the solution.
Thank you so much. Todd Levin.
Thank you, Chris. So, yes, I agree with CJ. I think those are great ideas. I think Asheville needs to absolutely focus upon affordable housing. The wealthy will always have housing, even if there isn't that big of a housing stock in the market, because they're wealthy, they need a house, they can build one. Okay? The city can do significant strides in simplifying the UDO, or Housing Ordinance, to especially promote higher-density housing in areas like downtown, which would not only help with affordable housing, it'll help cut off the pipeline to becoming unhoused. You know, a lot of folks say that the cause of being unhoused is drug use, alcoholism, divorce, losing a job. That can set someone back, but if there's affordable housing, that doesn't mean they actually have to live in the streets. I think a city's walkability, bikeability, I think you can have a lot more greenways and parks. If you have a higher density downtown, I get it that when people move to Asheville, they take a mental picture of the skyline, and any derivation from that can be seen as a degradation. But I think when you get to it, and you really get out in the neighborhoods, like all of us who are on the campaign trail, and we talk to people, people are willing to allow development, especially more centralized development, because people who serve the city absolutely need to be able to afford to live in the city. The fact that the children of our police officers, and our nurses, and our teachers can't go to the same school and can't play with the children of the city that they serve is just, it's inexcusable. So, so yes, I think there's a lot that the city can do. I agree with CJ. I think a great way, and pretty cost-free way, to just really simplify the UDO and try to promote greater, higher-density building, especially downtown. Thank you, Chris.
Fantastic. Thanks. Sage Turner, two minutes.
All right. Yes, CJ, I loved your, is the sky blue? We have an affordable housing problem. It's extreme. And I've been working on it in Asheville for almost 10 years. Before joining council, I was the chair of our Affordable Housing Committee. So I'm going to say, I try and drill this down, because I can talk about housing for days on ends, but three Ps: preserve, protect, and produce. Trying to create a similar way, a simpler way to look at this. So preservation is becoming more and more important, because as housing prices are going up and demand is soaring, it is hard for some families to say no to a really high-dollar ask to sell their property, especially if it needs repairs, or it's been facing, like it needs a new roof or something. So preserving folks in their existing affordable housing is key to the solution. And that can be done through repair programs, or repair assistance, utility subsidies, et cetera, just to make sure we're not displacing more folks. So protection, protection is coming up more and more these days, because we're seeing growth throughout the community, and we're trying to focus it, like Todd said, in downtown, but also along transportation corridors. And we're seeing, we have now mapped through a study what some of our more vulnerable neighborhoods facing extreme displacement and gentrification are facing. So we need to protect them. We're trying to figure out a way to create protections for some legacy historic neighborhoods while the rest of the city grows. So that's protect. The last one is produce. We need housing inventory, plain and simple. But the answer just isn't to build more and it will be fixed. We need strategies. We need to upzone, we need to create more incentives for programs for developers to build in a more precise and prescribed way that allows us to get the community resources we need and benefits, like affordable units built in, or closer to transportation, where you can reduce some of the 25% of income Ashevilleans spend on transportation. So we need really, regional studies are saying 14,000 units. It's going to take an all-hands-on-deck approach, and we're going to have to continue the hard work we've been doing so far. Thank you.
Thank you. For the next question, we'll do Todd Levin first, then Sage Turner, then CJ Domingo. So North Carolina, as y'all know, is not a home-rule state. The state government in general, the General Assembly in particular, can take a number of actions that affect the city, much more so than in many other states. And then, of course, you lay on top of that the fact that at least the current City Council and the current General Administration, or excuse me, General Assembly, have fairly different ideas about about politics and about government. So with all that said, how should the City Council approach local-state relations? So Todd, begin with you.
Yes, Chris, that is a wonderful question. We have, it is no secret, the city of Asheville has a horrific relationship with our State General Assembly, primarily because the General Assembly, you guys might know, significantly leans towards the right. Asheville is a significantly more liberal city. And a lot of times, I think if we were to, not to point the fingers, but if we were to spend less time virtue signaling, and less time with feel-good governance, and spend more time with just good governance and trying to get along with everyone else, I think that goes a long way. It sounds a little ultra-simplified, but if we were to, if we were to not demonize working across the aisle, if we were to not say, okay, so I'm a Democrat, when I openly say that I have friends who are Republicans and independents, and that I will openly listen to, talk to, and respect Republicans, I get a lot of feedback. God, they're evil. And I know a lot of it is hyperbole, but I think we need to leave that aside for the sake of Asheville. There are plenty of Republicans who live in Asheville, and there are a lot more independents. And I think if we can just push aside our petty politics, I'm trying to think of a non-derogatory way to say this, and actually just learn to get our, find the common ground, and start from the common ground, working forward, in the end, Asheville's going to have a much more positive relationship. And maybe a good significant amount of our tax dollars won't be leaving, you know, Asheville and going to Pennington County. I mean, it's just little, simple things that I think that we can do. And I think it starts from just being an adult. Thank you, Chris.
Thank you. Okay, Sage Turner, two minutes.
Yeah, great question. It reminds me of that saying we've all heard before, please grant me the grace to accept the things I cannot change. And this is a challenging one, because it's multi-leveled, I'd say. So sometimes we need to just send more people to state roles. Like Julie Mayfield was on City Council for a long time, and now she's a senator, and she's doing a fantabulous job, reaching across the aisle, forming bills with other parties in other cities. It's been wonderful, actually, to see her. And I'm hoping that some more of our local government continue on to those state positions, because I think that will help. Another way is teaming up with other cities. So it's not just about those politicians holding those seats, but it's about the residents that voted in those politicians. So we see change at an Asheville level, and at a state level, when other cities are also experiencing the same problem. So you have to team up, like with short-term rentals is a great example. For a long time, Asheville was really the only city that was seeing a really hard hit from short-term rentals. It just wasn't a problem in other communities that didn't have as much tourism. But as time has passed, that has changed, and short-term rentals are now affecting Charlotte, they're affecting Boone, they're affecting Greensboro, and we're all talking together. And bills are going to start forming from this. And so that kind of support is needed. You need to be able to work with other cities in your region and in your state to actually get things done together. Lastly, I would say, not to push too far. We have to understand where the line is. The plastic bag ban is a great example. This is a great initiative. Let's ban bags in our communities. It's commonly done in other cities. Why do we not do this? Well, we pushed too far, and we weren't ready. We didn't send enough education into the community, we didn't prepare with other cities. And before we could even vote on banning bags, we were told by the state that we would be disallowed to do so. So there's, there's limits, there's camaraderie, I would say, and partnership across the state to really get things done. And if we can't do it that way, then we're going to have to send more recruits.
All right. Thank you very much. CJ Domingo.
I really appreciated both of those points of view. I think Todd brings a good point. It is no secret that Raleigh tends to be more right-leaning, Asheville more left-leaning. And I think that by finding ways that we can build commonality, we can bring Raleigh to the table. I know from talking to some of the folks who represent areas other than Buncombe County, just, I had a chance to speak to some of them in the past couple of years, there's a perception that essentially Asheville is always, is a perpetually moody teenager of sorts amongst the state, where we always get into sort of fits, and we go through phases, and they think that if they just wait it out, it'll pass. But as Sage brought up, things like the plastic bag ban are rooted in good thinking, and they come from a place of real care and love for our community, of our mountain home, and wanting to make a better solution. I think that, just like Sage was saying about education, I think that we also need to make sure we are speaking to the heart across the aisle, because I, we all, you know, I am a Republican, but for me, I'm Asheville-first. That's who I am, that's how I feel. And I think that kind of straddling that line, because until I got involved in this political race, most people didn't know I was registered Republican, because that's not really a thing that I exude. But I think that if you, from having straddled that line, we all love our town, we all love our state, we all love our forests, and I think that we just have different language for doing it. And if we can find ways to translate that love and that care, I think that we can find better solutions for Asheville and get the state on board and excited to help us.
Thank you so much. For the next question, we'll begin with Sage Turner, then CJ Domingo, then Todd Levin. What is the role of tourism in growing a better, more livable Asheville? What is the role of tourism in growing a better, more livable Asheville? Sage Turner.
Oh, boy. Well, originally, tourism was seen as a way to bring economic development and growth to the community. And when the TDA was formed, and this idea of a percentage tax on lodging would be awarded to them for more marketing, it was a sound idea. The budget was like $300,000 a year. As it's grown, we now have a $40 million a year lodging tax pool of money. And it is a tax. However, the City Council cannot touch it. It is controlled by the VCT, TDA. And I would say tourism has a very strong influence in the community. It can, who you are marketing to, to visit the area can become future homeowners and residents. So it is key that we understand, and I'd say, better align how those marketing targets are hit, so that we could see our community grow in the ways we want, not just this perpetual visitation and exit, and maybe relocation for second homes, which seems to be what's happening. In my opinion, tourism is vital to the business community downtown. It's been going on for so long that we're highly dependent on it, but I would like to see us diversify. But I would like to see us diversify. I think we can start to slow the tourism a good bit. Fine with where we're at, but we do not need to continue growing it and growing it and growing it until it's a $50 million or $60 million budget or 50 million visitors. It's too much. It's impacting the residents. It's impacting the workforce. It's displacing the people that live here. It's not helping us keep up with wages. It's just become too much, I would say. So we're not in a position to walk away from it. There is much to be gained, respected and appreciated from tourism at the level it has gotten to right now. But please, let's diversify. Let's do that. Let's do it sooner. And every time I hear, you know, how will we do that? How will we get away from tourism? It will tie back to housing. When we do economic development, the chamber brings new businesses and other types. Sometimes they don't choose to relocate here because of the housing problem. Thank you.
Great. Thanks so much. CJ Domingo, two minutes.
Thank you. So the, the role of tourism is essentially, it's the same as it was coal for Virginia. It's oil for Texas. It is a powerful resource that has driven our economy. It goes back to the mid 19th century that tourism first started really dominating the conversation of Asheville. There's actually a postcard. I think it's in the North Carolina room at the bottom of the pack library where it's a, or not a postcard, but it's a political cartoon for about 100 years ago. And it depicts a woman sitting on a rocking chair, holding a burgeoning child, a humongous child that says Asheville Tourism Economy on it. And there's another child sitting neglected on the floor and it could stand in for anything. A hundred years ago, it says Asheville's Industrial Interests. And the tagline says, sure, we're proud of this child, but ma, why neglect that one? And this conversation has been ongoing for that over 100 years. So in terms of what does it fit into, how does it fit into our economy? As Sage said, we do need to find ways to diversify because just like Virginia, just like Texas, if you are overly committed in one era, you are fragile. And if we have another pandemic, if we have a economic crisis that causes the tourism to go down, we know from recent experience, we've all lived through this over the last 20, 25-ish years. Trying to get into 2000 as well, after the dot com bubble, worse, there was a dip for us that we also felt here in town consistently. We get hit over and over again. So we want to try and find ways to do it. But what I would also like to see is find ways to ensure that all these tourism dollars that are coming in are more fairly made available for people who live and work in Asheville. Give them opportunities to tap into that powerful resource.
Thank you so much. Todd Levin, two minutes.
Thanks, Chris. So of course, economic diversification is incredibly important. That means as a community, we actually have to be willing to engage and work with other industries and bring them into Asheville and give certain types of concessions in order to be able to diversify our economy. But what, since I have a limited time, one thing that I really want to drive home is that, and it's not that I think it's a cynical approach. I don't think we need to walk away from the TDA. I don't think we need to be upset that they have a $40 million purse. I would love it to be an $80 million purse. Going back to your prior question, Chris, this is why we need to get along with the General Assembly. Because wouldn't it be wonderful if tourism just spiked and the TDA had an $80 million purse? And they were allowed to build affordable housing? Or they were allowed to do other things that the General Assembly has limited them to do? So why go after the goose that lays the golden egg when it would be better if the golden egg can just actually benefit a lot more folk from, from Asheville? It's really not the locals who are paying this tax. It is taking money from other communities. They're coming here to Asheville and they are giving us their money. What we need to be able to do is to spend that locally. So I think yes, economic diversification is incredibly important. I think that's a wonderful thing to do. It's foolish. And, and it's actually, I mean, it's just, it's, it's, it's not wise to not have a diversified economy. However, I think vilifying the TDA and trying to defund the TDA or any of that type of stuff, I think is also very short-sighted when we should just work with the General Assembly to allow the TDA to spend this money locally, especially to help us address our issues such as housing. Thank you, Chris.
Thanks so much. For the next question in order, we'll begin with CJ Domingo, then Todd Levin, then Sage Turner. Asheville made national news, as you all know, for its stance on reparations. What does the future of reparations in Asheville look like and what should the future of reparations in Asheville look like? So for that one, we'll begin with CJ Domingo.
So I think that with reparations, I think that the, the necessary future needs to be something that brings the community together. I think that we got many good recommendations from the Reparations Commission. I think that quite a few things are actionable. I think that there are some details to be wrinkled out or to be ironed out. This is a, a very difficult one to do in the time span of two minutes because I really want to dig into details. And I know that I'm going to get in trouble if I do that because I'm going to get run out of time way too fast. But I'm going to say this is that in terms of providing reparations for what we did during urban renewal, taking care of these things. I recently saw a presentation about Southside, the history of Black Asheville, put on by Ms. Robinson, who's a local historian. And I think that it was very eye-opening talking about where we should put more of our focus. And the biggest part of that is making sure that we are securing future economic opportunity for the people who are long-term harmed by what urban renewal did. But again, like I said, my watchword is going to be things that bring our community together, not things that are going to drive a spike and further make it difficult for us to work together.
Okay. Todd Levin.
Yes. So Asheville set up the Reparations Commission. I think that is absolutely wonderful. We chose to have it a very large commission because we wanted to get a lot of the different independent neighborhood voices. I think that, that, that should be applauded. That is wonderful. But then pretty quickly, we were upset that they weren't making their timeline. Or that, oh, I don't know if that's really a constitutional remedy that we can provide. I think if we're going to set up a commission and we're going to make it as large and all-encompassing as this is, we have to allow the commission time to A, do its job. And then B, after it does its job, we need to sit and seriously listen to it. I, I, I think setting up a commission and then micromanaging its timeline or its, and products, I think is more counterproductive and I think it's setting the commission up to fail. So I think the commission is a wonderful idea. I think their requested timeline extensions are not unreasonable. I think it would be unreasonable to expect a product within a timeline that a five or seven-person commission should come up with, with such a big body. So I think we need to listen. It's great that we set it up, but now we actually need to listen to what the commission says, stop trying to micromanage them and to allot them some extra time. And I, I, I would love to see, I would love to see the commission continue on past its time as well. Thank you, Chris.
Thanks. Sage Turner.
Sure. So if the question is what should reparations look like, I don't think I'm the proper person to answer that. I think it's still forming, right? So we're talking about the Reparations Commission. I want to quickly say a big thank you to everyone that has been involved in that commission. It's been a lot of work. It's a big lift. It's true that we expected a lot in a small timeline. I do support the extension. We're also up against some deadlines for reporting and such that looks like an extension through October, early November should suffice. We'll see. But we do really need to hear from the commission and how we will move forward. And there will need to be a significant financial endeavor related to this. It's not just going to be words on a paper. We have actions that need to be taken. So in the meantime, as someone that's on council and already concerned about this and watching the Reparations Commission source ideas and hearing about their various buckets and groups, I feel like I'm already enacting some reparations like policies and votes, votes and decisions. Some examples would be when we had $500,000 left in ARPA funds. And we donated it to the Peak School, which was facing such huge growth, but could not keep up fiscally just yet, which is a new charter school in our community. Another is when we agreed to finally do the repair and fund the building of the Memorial Track in the East End community that was promised to them decades ago. Another is starting a reparations fund. So we're allocating money in every annual budget and there's a small increase of 2% every year that passes. So that number will continue to grow. We were in a long-running Asheville water kind of lawsuit. And when we won that lawsuit, we were awarded money. Well, we gave $500,000 of that to Asheville high students of minorities and low income that wanted to become teachers because we know that's one of the core problems. Getting folks in positions where you can learn and become and exposed and be educated on all of, I'm going to run out of time. There are so many things. Thank you.
Great. Thanks so much. For the sixth question, we'll begin with Todd Levin and then go to Sage Turner and then CJ Domingo. Parks and Recreation often gets ignored in conversations like these about local government and local politics. Despite the fact that this is really a primary way, for some folks, the primary way in which citizens engage with their government. What does Parks and Rec do well in the city of Asheville? What can they do better? And if you're on city council, what would you do to, to pursue an agenda around Parks and Rec? Well, again, we'll begin with Todd Levin.
Thank you, Chris. So Parks and Recreation are absolutely part of Asheville Core City Services. Asheville Core City Services should be fully funded in their entirety, long before a single penny is spent on anyone else's pet projects. If we build it, if we take the initiative and we build it, we take on the responsibility of further maintaining it for the, throughout its entire lifespan. The, the pool, the Melvin Hills, you know, pool is a great example. That is where families beat. Kids swim, kids hang out, keeps kids occupied. It's an incredibly important asset. It's wonderful when Asheville goes and builds stuff. But if we build stuff and then get distracted by some sparkly new project and don't maintain it and then we're going decades and decades with a lack of infrastructure, you know, funding, then, then, I mean, we, we might as well not build it in the first place. So the thing that city council can do for Parks and Recs is fund it. Fund a part of the Asheville Core City Services and then make sure that it's properly funded and maintained. And we should also look into, and, and I'm not saying we should, I think the city actually does a wonderful job of this, of getting community feedback as to what we should do with our Parks and Rec budget. What should we build and where should, should we build it? So I think we're doing a great job with that, but I think once it's built, it needs to be maintained. Parks and Recs need, need to be funded and that's definitely something that Asheville City Council can do. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Sage Turner.
Let's rebuild Malvern Hills. I'm so glad that this has gained support. So Parks and Rec plays an integral role in our community. In fact, if you are an affordable housing builder in the community, something we desperately need, there's a list of criteria that you have to be near to even receive grant monies. And one of those is near parks. And that's, it's for good reason. As the city grows, these public spaces, access to green space, access to exercise, access to swim clubs and clubhouses is going to become integral to the overall health of our community and to our families and young families. So we need, we actually have more park acreage per capita than the average city. It's, it's a, I want to say it's 17 acres per, it's a large number. It's more than the average and I think that's wonderful, but maintaining them has been a problem as we've seen with Malvern Hills. And we're going to have to do big things. This is why on council, we put forth a Parks and Rec bond. So it's $20 million. They have some ideas on how it's going to be built. We've just done this Parks and Rec kind of planning process and input process to find out. One of the big things we're learning is that there's a big need for an indoor year-round aquatic center or aquatic facility. And that's wonderful. But as these guys have said, that does not mean we should not maintain and take care of the existing facilities we have. I think Parks and Rec does a wonderful job of children's programs and programming. There's a wonderful guide that just came out for this next part, next six months, I think. I highly recommend picking it up. I did a challenge just last year to do a walk in every city park with some, some female friends and it was fun. If you haven't been to all the parks, I highly encourage you to check them out. We have some beautiful little corners in the city and it's very important that we maintain them.
CJ Domingo.
So I feel very strongly about Parks and Rec because Melvin Hills Pool being the one that we're all talking about, that's a pool where I learned to swim at. That's this pool that we visited every, every summer as in my childhood. My mom, in order to try and support me and my three siblings, she would during the summer, when there's a lot of jobs around, she would sometimes work two or three jobs. And it was nice to have a public park that she could drop us off at in the morning and know that when she came back, you know, five or six o'clock, we would be fine. We would be safe. We would be taken care of. And most importantly of all, we'd be exhausted because she's exhausted too. She can't have four screaming kids running around driving her crazy. This is a place that is a part of the necessary fabric of our community because it provides a third space beyond home, work or school for people to go to, to interact with our community, to be a part of the Asheville neighborhood. And it builds that community spirit and helps to reduce all of those other externalities, loneliness. It helps to get rid, discourage crime because people have a good place to go and have a positive outlet instead of, you know, getting involved into less than desirable activities. But I think that also this is a reflection of where they have done so well with so little. There's not a lot of resources provided. As Sage called out, they consistently have some challenges there. But knowing people in Parks and Rec, I know that they're doing the best they can with what they have. Frequently they are tasked to pick up the slack where other departments might overlap with their parks, but they do not assign as many resources. And Parks employees feel like they get kind of, they get the short end of the stick. So I want to make sure that they are well taken care of and well supported and that we are maintaining our spaces. So that way with things like Melvin Hills Pool, we could have hit it eight years ago when we first found out that we needed a problem and got it for maybe about 100,000. Instead of having to wait till this year, it would have been 400,000, but we didn't have the money. And now we're having to put 3 million aside in a GO bond to support the same pool. Stitch and time saves nine. It's good for the community. It's good for Asheville. It's good for everything. Thank you.
Thank you. And we're in a position I did not expect us to be in, which is y'all are being so respectful of time that we actually have a little bit of extra time on the back end. So see if we can take another two minutes apiece and we'll begin here with Sage Turner, then CJ Domingo, and then Todd Levin. Just to talk about, you know, what is the single most important issue facing the city that we haven't talked about today? Obviously our time is necessarily limited. What is the single most important thing that we haven't been talking about today? And sort of what is your view about how Asheville City Council should handle that issue? So we'll begin with Sage Turner, two minutes.
I mean, the single most important issue is housing, but since we've talked about that, I'm going to go kind of broader on it and say sustainable growth. The reality is whether it's climate change, tourism, outdoor experiences, the natural wonders of the Blue Ridge Mountains, we are growing. Whether we like it or not, we're going to see a lot of growth. And if we don't plan it well, we are going to hate ourselves later. It's actually a rare opportunity to see a desire for so much growth and still be a small city. Because I guarantee you that there are large cities out there that wish they could go back 50 years and do some things differently. So it is integral that we pay attention now. It's integral that when we do all of these UDO updates that are coming around housing, that we plan them well. That we take into account things like transportation corridors, that we get people out of cars. Because this growth model that we're seeing is going to clear-cut for us if we don't densify in our city. We are the largest city in a five-county region. We're kind of the metropolis of the area, I would say. So we're going to see a lot of growth. We need to get to terms with what that should look like, how we can better prescribe the outcomes we want. I just learned that we reviewed 22 conditional zoning housing projects on council in the last two years. That's 22 projects. I've asked us to boil down the summaries and outcomes of those projects to better understand if we could create a prescription-like process and say, look, you don't need to go through a year of costly hearings and approval processes if you can create these things, affordability, save the tree canopy. If you can build like that, let's go, let's do it. Let's help you do it faster. Because we need to be strategic and if we're not, we're going to see increases in pollution. We're going to see increases in noise. We're going to see increases in congestion, increases in fossil fuel use. All of it is going to continue through the roof and we're gonna, we'll be stuck. So growth, sustainable growth strategies.
Thank you so much. CJ Domingo, two minutes.
I think that kind of tangential, but very, very importantly related to what Sage was saying. I think that our biggest challenge that we don't talk enough about is communication and coordination. Because we have a lot of people working in very important ways. But coordinating between these different groups has been a challenge for us in the past and has created a lot of the problems we face today and will continue to be a problem going forward unless we can find ways to better communicate our big strategic goals between people who are focused on affordable housing, talking to the people in transit, talking to the people who are working on job growth and diversifying our economy, talking to the people who are trying to make sure education is taken care of. It seems like people feel like with a strain on resources, they don't see the joint benefit from these bigger programs. So we need to have more opportunities to get those interlinks working and it'll give us a chance to find things like what I was just talking about with the pool, places where we can buy solutions cheap because we know what's going to become a problem tomorrow. And with that sort of long-term mindset, not only does this allow people, allow us to get a fiscal, responsible set of solutions that will let us buy these solutions cheap, but it lets people be a part of that solution. Because I find that for many of the programs where the city ran into some issues like the recent Haw Creek development, there were quite a few people who actually ultimately were on board with the city's plan, but there had not been enough effective communication beforehand showing them how this project was going to bring tangible progress to their community and tangible solutions. to their community and tangible solutions to problems they were already feeling. And so if I could encourage anything, find ways to communicate with people on the topics that you don't really see as important and talk the most you find important. I think that together we're going to find that we really do care about both things.
Okay. Thank you. Todd Levin, two minutes.
Thank you, Chris. So first and foremost, I want to say Sage and CJ, I love you both. I'm so glad you guys are both running for, for city council, you Sage, for reelection. You did such a great job talking about sustainability and communication. I'm not going to unpack that any further because I, I don't need to because you guys just did a great job. So I'm going to talk about the plight of the unhoused. It is still a significant issue. It's one that hits me incredibly close to home. So my absolute best friend growing up, my twin sister was homeless, living in the streets of Asheville and she was ultimately killed as being unhoused with a kid in Asheville. And too many times I've heard that the, well, first and foremost, I've heard people treat the unhoused as problems, not as people. They're absolute people. Every time I see someone who's unhoused, I see my sister. I see someone's kid. I see someone's sibling, someone's parent. And too many people view the solution to either you bust them out, you throw them in jail or you pack them in some old hotel with no wraparound type of services. And it's all seems to be out of place, out of mind, and that's it. It's expensive. It's degradating. It's just, it is not the way you treat human beings. I think if we want to really, well, if we want to get to the cause, we focus upon housing. We've definitely talked enough about housing. So after that, if you want to help, you have to give people wraparound services because these are human beings. They deserve dignity. They need help other than just getting a roof over their head. I see the clock is up. So anyways, yes, unhoused, we can't ignore it. We can't just ship them out out of sight, out of mind. They're human beings. They absolutely need love and, and they have a place in Nashville. So that's it. I just, I wanted to touch upon that. Thank you, Chris.
Thanks. That was a great, great way to end. Um, want to thank everybody for being here today. Of course, everybody for listening, all six candidates that are running for, for city council. So, um, Kevin Frazier, Kim Roney, O'Hess, Todd Levin, Sage Turner, CJ Domingo. Six folks running for three seats. Again, all taking time out of their schedules, out of their lives to try to be a public servant for our city and our community. So thank you all. Want to remind the folks listening, absentee ballots again, go out September 6th. Early voting runs October 17th through November 2nd and election day is November 5th. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chris, and thank you, Dave.